So I have six o'clock and then I call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the town YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. To join the Zoom Zoom meeting. It is eight three three eight nine three three one four nine five. Passcode seven five seven zero five seven or by phone three zero nine two zero five three three two five. You can join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So under new business, the first item I have is discuss review act on the date for the second annual business networking event. John, you had said that a date has been decided on by the chamber. Is that correct?
Yes. Yep. Um, and. I'm gonna need to look at it in my calendar. I think it's October the third or something, but let me just make sure this date here. Yes, it's Tuesday, October 3rd. And I have it in my calendar at four o'clock. I think it might be four or five in the evening, but October 3rd, it's a Tuesday.
Okay.
And we're confirmed, Chris has confirmed that with the Aggie. So.
We'll be at Aggie again. Okay, good.
Beautiful.
You know what time?
But he said it's he has it down as 4:00 PM, but we'll have to check. It might be 5:00 PM, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Early evening.
So I last time I saw Chris, I did say something to her about. In part because of our efforts around different things. Trying to get out the word for Aggie, trying to put together the business directory, talking to people in town. We now have an email list of a couple hundred people that are solid emails that I'm going to share with her. It's all public information. None of it's private. So it's not like, you know, it's an issue in sharing that. But, you know, hopefully we can get even a better response than we did last year. And we've got now thirty five, thirty six people who have signed up for the directory. Hopefully those are people that might feel, you know, more interested in participating also, so.
Yeah, it would be great if we could do an outreach. It's, you know, at some point, I know, like you say, the chamber will do something, but as each of us on the commission here. When we do interact with business folks in town, if we could. If you could just say to a boy, it'd be great if you, you know, could could come and it's free and. It's a worthwhile event. So if you guys could help push that, that would be great. And I'm not sure. Dan, but um, would you, would you put that on the like our Facebook? Page or maybe even on the town hall thing, the town hall, you know, event list?
Yeah, now that we have a date and maybe I'll just confirm the time with Chris, whether it's four or five. And with details to follow in terms of how they sign up and when they can start signing up. But yeah, I can stick it on the Facebook page now as an intent and. Maybe ask Chris when she wants it to start being publicized. I mean, it may not. Help to do it now, but if, you know, three months before she wants us to start putting it out there, that sort of thing, or, you know. But everything she thinks is best.
Great.
Okay.
The DDIC had a booth last year during the Firecracker Festival.
Yeah.
I have the same thing too, but in September, though. It's going to be for the next Firecracker Festival.
Yeah, that was on here on the agenda because I saw Kevin's posting about the Firecracker Festival happening later in the year. I don't think he gave an actual date or has he?
He says September.
He said September, yeah, okay, all right. I had put it down here prior to my knowing that and I was thinking, you know, we had like a couple of months, we had to figure out what we were going to do, but. Okay. Anybody have any questions for John about the business networking event this year versus last year or?
For the Cowship Festival in June. They could also maybe promote.
Oh, promote it there too, yeah.
I do have a question for John in regards to the chamber. Will they be holding an open house? Social event as similar, I know last year there was because. Someone came on board, but do they have an open house greeting type event each year?
No, that was basically because we moved to a new place, right? And like an open house to. Here, you know, you're welcome to our new place. So I don't think so. I don't know, Lenny, if you follow the chamber in Facebook or not, but they we've been incredibly active with. Ribbon cutting ceremonies and events. It's it's crazy. We have nine new members this month.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah. So so the so the chamber is really growing. So and so I don't know, there's lots of opportunity for networking if that's what you were looking for.
Yeah, like a networking event with the chamber.
Well, there's the monthly.
There's billions of them.
So every month and they had one recently at One Connection that Paul and I both went to.
Okay, so you go out, you don't have it at the office area, you go into other.
Yes, yeah.
Other businesses.
Absolutely. We do that and we also have a business after hours almost every month. Where we do a networking event and this last one was at Sylvia and. Quinn, which is the all work form. Yeah, right behind Walmart there. And, you know, the Stoneforge. Paramount Drive, so.
I had Mrs. Quinn's son at school.
Oh, okay, cool.
So these are held each month?
They are held each month. Lenny, I think the best thing to do would be to to get on. The chamber either Facebook page, you know what I mean, and get follow the Facebook page for the chamber. Or get on their email list. I know the town is on the email list, but I'm not sure if you specifically are.
No, I'm not. Okay.
I have been trying unless something else comes up, like a conflict without a meeting. Going to each of those monthly networking events. The last one I went to was at People Incorporated. And I actually spoke to several several of the people there about the diet nursing home.
Right.
But they were they were well aware of it.
Yep.
Know what's in it and didn't quite suit them, but you know. So it's a it's a good opportunity for things like that, so.
Now, these business app hours, they're open to businesses that are affiliated with it or is it open to the public or is that where?
They're open to both. They're open to members of the chamber and the town is a member of the chamber. So you're welcome to come.
Thank you.
It's, you know, it's any, actually, we also have a youth group and I wanted to mention this tonight, Dan, if that's okay. Is that we have a professional, I forget, young professionals group, a young professional group and. They're also meeting in any young professional that works for the town. Is able to attend the that young professionals group and. They're starting to get some traction actually where, you know, young professionals are networking and that sort of thing. So. If you guys want to, you know, make that available to the folks in the town hall, I think, you know, that's an opportunity. For the town to take advantage of their one of their membership options.
Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah. I can only think of a handful of people that meet that age requirement at one of those on our meeting tonight, so. Okay, sure. The next item I had was to discuss the open member position for a representative from the Dayton farming community. So of course Darlene resigned. She said she just didn't have the bandwidth, unfortunately, with everything going on. Out at the Rougeos to to commit to being here each month. I did talk to the owners of Under the Sun. They didn't say no, but they did say they appreciated Darlene's position that running a farm, particularly three seasons out of years, it's a twenty four seven operation. And they would hate to commit to doing something that they they also could not follow through on. So we still have that open and there are a couple of things we can think about. And we don't necessarily have to decide tonight, but one is to try to find somebody else who could be that representative. The other is to reach out to the Dayton Agricultural Commission and see if they would like to send a representative. I'm not sure. If they would be interested or if that they really kind of align with what we were looking for, which is somebody who could speak to the business end of running a farm. And what are the issues and how can the town help and that sort of thing? A third option would be. Just like John represents us because we're a member of the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce. There are similar organizations around farming like southeastern Massachusetts area. I forget what the P stands for, producers or, but it's a farming, not cooperative, but it's a. They support farmers with programs and information and webinars. Yeah, and I don't know where they're based other than to say southeastern Mass, but. They're not Dayton, but they're a regional resource for farmers. I'm sure they would have the requisite information, you know, but they're just not a Dayton specific representative, but that would be yet another option that we might want to consider. If we want to continue, keep this position as, you know, agricultural focus. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that would be great if we do, if we would be able to keep it as an agricultural focus. I do think that having agribusiness represented would be would be good.
Dayton agribusiness man or what is saying here?
Ideally, yes, but otherwise I think that that would be the next best alternative would be have like a representative, I think. They either would be good, I think, in the absence of a of a Dayton based agricultural business, I think that would be for sure.
Okay, so Lenny did have a suggestion of a name for a Dayton farmer that I can reach out to or he can reach out to.
I will.
He will, and we'll see where that goes. And then at our next meeting, based upon that feedback, we can make a decision how we want to proceed, so.
Excellent. My 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 wife is going to Under the Sun as well. I'll see if if maybe just. If they warm up to the idea a little bit, I know I would want to push them into something that they're unable to commit to, but. No, it's I'll I'll see if I can chat with them a little bit too, because my wife does go there fairly often and. Brief briefly was an employee of theirs once upon a time. So I'll I'll continue that discussion with them, but you know, if if they're not able to commit, they're not able to commit, but I do think that that those are both good ideas.
Okay. The next discuss any new business interest in town. There's none this month that I'm aware of. Raphael and I have a friend. Who's interested in opening a machine shop in town. He's looking for like fifteen hundred square feet that he could lease. And he asked me to get him and put him in touch with the owners of the mill on Spring Street. So I was trying to get. Kobe's Kobe is personally Kobe's information. I was also maybe trying to get.
Leanne.
Yeah, so she said she would get that for me. I was also trying to get information about. Where corporate productions is to see if there's any vacancies in that complex. And then I was going to ask Joe, unfortunately couldn't come here tonight because he has a his ear to the ground generally for. Things that are open for businesses in town, but. So but it's just promising to hear that somebody would would want to do that. And to be quite honest, our friend is based in Rehoboth. His partner is based in. Over Row. I asked him why he wanted to come to Dayton and I was flat out, I said, you know, Rehoboth has lower. Partial tax rates than we do. What attracts you to Dayton? And he said, yeah, but what do I get for my money there? That you have services.
Right.
I'm willing to pay for services and you're going to provide them in Dayton. Oh, that's true. Yeah. So I mean, that's just nice feedback to hear that, you know, it's not all about. Searching around for the lowest tax rate and opening up there. It's, you know, a lot more to basically than. Than that one focus, which we hear a lot about and I understand, you know, the not how taxes impact things, but. That was just nice feedback. So I'll follow up with Joe and ask if he has any ideas, but also try to get that context for him at those two sites. Actually, John and I had lunch recently at Jesse's Diner, which opened up last month.
Oh.
It's a very nice place. I really recommend it, so.
Now, they do lunch or they just do breakfast?
I think they close at 1:00 PM, so they may have a lunch brunch thing, but they close rather early there, but but I think they open as early as five or six, so okay.
Oh, so it's Jesse's?
Jesse's Diner, yeah, or is it Jesse's Place, sorry?
Yeah, Jesse's Diner.
Jesse's Diner, okay.
I ordered a Bloody Mary. They couldn't accommodate me at breakfast.
The next time I had was to discuss updates, the Dayton Business Guide. So Paul had raised this at our last meeting. He was talking more about residential than commercial, but it they kind of overlap, which is. How to improve information sharing with people coming to town that are looking to do development. Whether that might be building a house or whether that, you know, might be opening a new business. There is a rather comprehensive, I think. Like Business Guide, which I think might help put together that's out there, but it's a lot of information. So again, it's, you know, lots of read through, figure out what you want. I didn't realize you would be here on Zoom, so I did have something to share, but unfortunately it's on paper, so I can. Figure out if it's to and send it to you afterwards. This is just something I found online from the town of Westford. It's just a little trifle, but it's digital, it's online. It's just a one page guide to. Steps, contacts, things you should know about when it comes to, in this case, opening a business, but you could have a similar one for. Presidential. So I did share this with Mike, or actually I just left it for him at the selectmen's office. I haven't had a chance.
Go take it.
Yeah, but people are looking at it. I just thought it was a really amped me quick step by. Not that there's a lot more information that you need to, you don't need to know about, but.
Definitely.
Yeah, yes, so. Maybe we could, as a starter. Go through the business guide, which I mentioned, the planning board is also doing Jeff Cabal's looking at it. And see if we can come up with some ideas for. You know, how to improve that and also come up with like companion, perhaps Paul, as you were suggesting on the residential side.
Absolutely. Yeah, that would be great.
Should you make a copy and give this to Mike Mullen?
Well, I left it to selectmen's office to answer, but I know he's been really busy, so I haven't talked to him about it, but yeah. But I'll make up two copies. I'll see your answer and I'll email it out to you, so you guys can.
Thank you very much. Yes, I did. I did read through the business guide. I did read it over and. We will, I know there's going to be a warrant article pertaining to our stormwater process, the the MS four stormwater permitting. I know there's a warrant article pertaining to that at this town meeting. And I did notice that in the business guide as we have it, that we don't have quite as much. For conservation and the Conservation Commission permitting. So those I think will be a couple of good additions, because I think that that those are two of the areas that are less understood sometimes by some people that. Lead to a little bit of confusion in the process. So I think that if we can come up with a visual aid that does something similar to what you what you provided, which unfortunately I'm not there for. You know, if we can kind of condense the the existing business guide, enrich it with a little bit pertaining to maybe stormwater and. And conservation, a little specifics, and then create a visual aid similar to that. I think that that would be really, really good in terms of giving us a distributable that we could, we could hand out, that would kind of give people a roadmap and point them in the right direction.
Yeah, I agree. Oh, in addition to sending it, I'll send everybody to, if you haven't already seen it, a copy of the Town Business Guide. Just so you can look through it and maybe over the next few meetings, we can pour through it a little bit and come up with some suggestions for. Maybe additional information, maybe just reformatting that makes it, you know, easier for people to pour through, so.
Excuse me, Dan.
Yeah.
Um, I cannot find it. So the only way I can find that document is near a Chamber of Commerce, which has a link to the document. And that's it. I was looking for it on the town homepage. I was everywhere looking for it and I could not find it.
All right, so I'll bring that up to with Leanne about where she, we should have the link in multiple places. I mean. I we do have it on the DDIC page of the town website. There is a link.
Really?
Yeah, because I put it out there, but I agree there should be multiple, you know, spots, so I'll speak to Leanne about that.
Yes, I put on, it is at the DIC page. If you go to the DIC page on the Dayton homepage and then scroll down, it's the very last link on our page in the link section.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Next. Discuss our participation at Firecracker Festival. Raphael already brought that up. I put it on here because I thought it was coming up towards the beginning of the summer. And wanted to test what kind of things, if any, we wanted to do for promotional material. But it's now apparently been pushed out to September.
Really? The Firecrackers are all done by September.
Kevin, did you have a reason? You just stated it or?
No, I didn't give a reason.
Okay.
Not at all. Maybe just too busy. I don't know.
Okay.
To rename it the Puffin Spice Festival.
The Lions Club has a lot of events going on too, so you don't want to run in conflict with them.
True, yeah. So anyway, there's not so much urgency in here. I will tell you that our frequently called numbers guide for the town town offices. Was not so popular last year. And I probably ended up, you know, a dozen. Mostly half of those I forced on people, so. We have a town that got stuck up at the front desk at the town hall, so. We don't have to decide tonight, but we might want to think about doing something different. I know John and the Chamber of Commerce last year had a. Machine making. Bubbles that got them a lot of attraction, so. Maybe that's a good investment for us, bubble making machine. But we can think about that. And the old business. Review, the job fair postings. Really, I just wanted to see if we had much feedback. I know. You know that on the town website and on social media. You know, we had been just kind of participating in putting out there, what are the job, school job fairs that have been going on and are going on. Over the coming months and Jonathan, I didn't know if you had any update for us or feedback or?
On what?
Job fair.
Oh, the job fair. I'm sorry. My brain was, I was looking, I was still on the town website. So the job fair, we've decided when, you know, there's just not enough time to do it, right? And to do it in a quality way, but what I did was I did get back to everyone that we that I had spoken with. And asked them if they wanted to be on the distribution list of the chamber, also publishes on a weekly basis a now hiring. Publication and it's all the jobs that our members have open and. So and any member can post, you know, to that now hiring a list, so. They're all local jobs and so both the Dayton, the DR. And the BP and the Aggie School, all three of them asked to get signed up. For that, for that publication. So at least we're going to now start sharing local jobs with those. You know, vocational schools for the students to see if they can work locally. So look, you know, it's at least kind of a win win, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
Sean, in regards to that page, is it on their Facebook page or is it on their website page, the chamber website?
The jobs, the job, it's a, it's actually a weekly email that comes out. It's a, it's called, it's a now hiring. Email. I, Lenny, if you want, I can like send you a sample of each of those emails, the, you know, the the member. Email that usually has what our networking events are and then the other one, which is a. The hiring email, just so you can have a take, you know, take a look at them.
Okay, no, no, thank you.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll do.
Did anybody else have any questions about? For John or no? So next is discuss with you the drone videography project, so. The weather has finally turned nice. Things are starting to turn green. We do want to get back to Pinnacle now and have her start ramping up. So we had identified previously ten sites that we would like her to concentrate on. I did speak to Leanne Herwin about three of them, which was the town campus, town hall campus. One of the town boat ramps and doing something along the county street, like around Main Street, that quarter mile where there's some businesses. And asked if there was anything we needed to get permission from the selectmen. She said. He did not think so, but just as a courtesy, we probably want to put something in front of the selectmen just to say. We'd like your permission to the drone videography. Yes, I think that is coming up on the agenda. And I did say I would reach out to any county street businesses that might be impacted, just to make sure they had no objections personally to. Us taking anything that might include them. I also got a contact for Dayton Power, Michael Joyce. I did leave a message for him. He's the plant manager. I had not heard back from him, but. I just left it on his office phone. I also have his personal cell phone number from I got from Leanne, so. If I don't hear from him soon, I'll just reach out to him again on his cell phone. And just see if he would be amenable to us doing some videography in that area and capturing. You know, the grounds around Dayton Power. That was the only one that Pinnacle thought might be an issue. And particularly because of its proximity, is it close to Byrkes? Is it airport?
Dayton Power?
Yeah, is it in that area? No, okay, so but anyway, she thought, and but, you know, they are gated, so we would definitely have to get their permission, so. The next was a local farm and I've already spoken to Darlene Rougeau and she's fine with that. She said. You might even want to come up a couple of times, once during planting, once during harvest, you know, once just to get some greenery and. Just have the person reach out to her and she'll set it up with them. So I have to reach out to the complex at the mill and get their permission because we wanted to do something as in. Like get up on the roof there and do a circle around of the whole mill complex. And then next was a local horse stable and Paul, you thought your aunt might be amenable to letting us do that?
Yeah, we've got a tentative, yes. Yep, I just have to, once we have a date, I just have to. Or a couple of target dates anyway, or or should I should I solicit some target dates and then?
Maybe we can just, if she's okay with it, we can just instruct Pinnacle to reach out to her.
Oh, sure.
And they can just work out like, you know, what's the name of your your aunt's farm or stables?
To be, it's it's private. It's not like a named farm.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Yeah, if you just wanted like send me an email with her contact information or she's okay with that, and then I'll just share it with Pinnacle and they can get together. Okay. Mannheim, I was planning to reach out to Dave Carlucci this week. He's the manager up there. I doubt he would have any issue, but. Just get his permission.
I did speak with an employee at Mannheim who did mention that that his his best day, so if you're trying to reach out to him. The best day is actually Tuesday. They said Tuesdays are the slowest day over there, so that's actually the day that he's most available to talk.
Okay, great, so I'll give him a call.
Yeah, and it should, it should be, should be a fairly warm, warm conversation, because I did kind of pre-broach the topic with an employee who mentioned it to him. And so he said, yeah, he is, he is happy to talk and Tuesdays are the best day for him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next was Charles Boatyard. To be honest, I've been up to Charles a few times. I've had trouble getting in front of the owner. He's busy. He directs me to the office. You know, he just, he's working, so I don't know if anybody is friends with the owner of Charles.
I am friends with someone who's really good friends with him.
Okay.
Brother Woods is very good friends. So I'll I'll reach out to Woody.
Okay, all right, and and just see if he wouldn't mind us doing it.
Zapwood too.
Okay.
Seventeen twelve is good friends with Tom.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll get back to you.
And the and then the last one was Bristol Aggie, so I was going to reach out to them this week and see, because they may. Because they may actually have something existing, they may very well have done something in their past for marketing or just few of the grounds. That they might be willing to share with us, so we don't have to take new videography, but if not, let's get their permission so we can go on the grounds, so. And then I'll give all this information back to Pinnacle and with the contacts. Anybody have any questions about that? The next was the revision to the Home Occupation zoning bylaws. So I had already shared that back in February with what's called the PAC group, which is. Um town administrator, building commissioner, planning, office manager, conservation manager, board of health. They meet monthly about things going around in town, typically projects that, you know, need help, that may have been stuck between gaps and committees, that sort of thing. And so, you know, they promised to review it and give me feedback. Um fortunately, right after that led into finance planning and preparation for the town meeting, so. Um Mike suggested, you know, we revisit this in June with them. And then based upon that, we can get their feedback, come up with something as a proposal that would tend to be brought forward to planning. And I really think personally that planning should bring it forward, I mean, we want them to buy into it, not try to circumvent them. Um because really, you know, they're the owners of bylaws and. I think it puts something out that they, you know, adamantly are against, so. So we'll do that, and hopefully that gives us still plenty of time to tee this up for a special town meeting, which would be around November timeframe. Um anybody have any questions about that? And then the last item I have was to discuss the Dayton Local Business Directory. One, nothing really new is added, like I think we're about thirty-five or thirty-six businesses now. The only question I had was suggestions for promoting it, uh most recently I've been promoting it on social media. And picked up a few, I initially started off going, you know, door to door. Um that was not so effective, because it's hard to get in front of the decision maker sometimes. But I didn't know if um one, people had suggestions for how to promote that more. And two, just kind of a general discussion about engaging with people in town, like. We're talking about next fall having the um business networking event. Having a booth at Firecracker, but ideally, I'd like at least quarterly, if not, you know. Some kind of event, not event, some way of engaging with businesses in town that, or at least give them potential to engage with us. I didn't know if a monthly coffee, you know, just, we're gonna be here. Wherever that here might be, um we have coffee, come down on a Saturday morning, meet, talk, share your opinions.
I love that, I love doing coffee connect type events.
Yeah, I don't know if this building would be available to us on a Saturday or something like that. I know it's basically what the town Chamber of Commerce does, they just have people host it, you know, at their places, but. Um you know, and there may be some businesses in town that would like to do that, but you know, failing that, we could always host it here and just.
Or job fair?
Yeah, but really, it's just like, you know, we want to hear from you. We're gonna make ourselves available to hear from you, come down and talk, have some coffee, chat. I I mean, I'm open to other suggestions too, it's just, you know, what people think, we might be, we can do to try to engage people more typically. And we just want to get feedback from businesses and what they need and what they want, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, I wonder if maybe we uh something like, I'm just just spitballing here, so part part pardon in advance, a bunch of bad ideas. So maybe some things like um we could periodically could do a question and answer sessions, like a live stream question and answer session from um. For business owners that have questions about um, you know, whether it's permitting process or uh what's going on in Dayton. Or uh ways that they could promote or connect with customers. Um an idea that I was thinking about, but I don't quite know exactly how to uh how to ensconce in action just yet. Would be uh maybe it would involve something like a partnership with the Cable Commission, I was thinking about like a brief um. Open, open to any business that wants to sign up, that way there's no favoritism or anything like that, but um. Like local business spotlights, where a local business owner could come in and just record, like, you know, record a two or a five or a six minute. Little spot with us, kind of just introducing themselves to the town, talking a little bit about their business and what they do. That way, you know, it'd have very low cost, it would really just be, um you know, we we, I believe through the cable commission uh committee, we have the equipment already, I believe, right? And you know, just just um really just be getting the training on how to use it, or maybe having somebody from Cable Committee periodically coming in to uh to to. Run things for us, but yeah, I was thinking something like a local business spotlight, where people could come in and just talk a little bit about their business, maybe um. Prescript a couple of questions in advance to do it almost like interview style, where they can kind of have some nice leading questions that give them the opportunity to put their best foot forward. No, no, please.
I think that'd be wonderful for Cooperative Productions, because they're trying to recruit people to come work with them, or to reach out to people who have. Individuals with disabilities that might need presidential service.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yes.
Wonderful place to live, work, and play, right, and uh people opportunity to uh give some additional reasons on why that is.
Yeah, the Parks and Rec, you know, they're they're getting all kinds of airtime, right, I mean, uh we gotta compete with Parks and Rec.
Right, it's hard to compete with Easter egg hunt, but.
That's right, we should have business pickleball, what's, how can you turn a business into a commercial only? Emotional event. Anyway. Um no, so I'll actually take that on, I'll reach out to cable. You know, if they can't help, I'm sure there's a way we could still do it, you know, I mean, not so much help in airing it, but help in recording it. But I'll see what they can offer, and if not, they can't really have the bandwidth to help with recording, you know, I'm sure we can still figure out a way to do it, so.
Wouldn't we put it on our town page as a link?
Um that's the, you know, to to watch.
Business spotlight.
Business spotlight, yeah, and hopefully it's gears at certain times that people can go watch and, yeah, absolutely. Anybody else have any suggestions or feedback or?
One other thing would be perhaps um the sign up for the Dayton Business Guide, for for folks who want to um. Be be part and be listed in the direction of the directory, people want to be listed in the directory. Perhaps we could send a letter to the town clerk's office uh to ask if he would be amenable to including the optional signup sheet. In the standard paperwork for a business certificate.
He's actually already doing that?
Oh, oh, good, excellent.
Yeah, he started, he started that effective January. But yeah, so um and that we have gotten a few that way, so people have just um opened up, so. Anyone else? Correspondence, none?
Oh, um one piece of possible uh verbal correspondence. I did speak with uh Bill Moore from the Board of Assessors regarding um if he would be willing to do a informational session. For us, that we could understand more, um he said that he is absolutely agreeable to doing that, but one of the things that he requested. Just to ensure it's a productive use of time for everybody and that he's got the answers ahead of time. If there were some specific questions that we had and a specific information that we could supply ahead of time. And I know, of course, we could kind of, you know, uh ask some questions on the fly too, as things come up, I'm sure he's open to being conversational, but to make sure that he's. Got his ducks in a row and can kind of give us the most pertinent information, he said that if we could kind of draft up some questions to provide him ahead of time, that he'd be happy to do that for us.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can do that and I'll send it out, I know he wanted to wait until, because everybody's busy, like sometime after town meeting, so. June, July, somewhere around there, so I'll send out some questions, I'll send it out to everybody, and we can look at it at the next meeting and see if it. It's comprehensive and then we can share it with them, I know some of it was that whole um. Form of list that supposedly business would file with the town every year. With the assessors department, and we don't know whether. We enforce it, whether they actually have response to that, you know, what do they do with the information, if anything, that sort of thing, so. Um but yeah, I mean, he can certainly help do that, kind of with these questions and then pass that off, so he's prepared and. I think some of the other questions that I got, which I mean, I can include this, so he has it, but. Is um how is person, particularly, I think this is more for small business, how is personal property tax actually assessed? I mean, are they going into people's businesses and looking around, is it just a? You know, a guess, is it proportional to the year before and they just assumed depreciation, is it? How do they actually do it, what's the mechanism, so um those are kind of some of the questions I got from people, so.
Right, yeah, no, absolutely, that that is a good question.
Um I did share the minutes, it took me a few times to get the minutes right, for the last bunch, but plenty of them out there. Um if people have read them, I would entertain a motion to um approve the minutes for March twenty seventh.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty seven, twenty twenty-three.
And have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Post. Um set the next meeting date, so following the fourth Monday of the month at six P M, that was put it down for May twenty-third, sorry, May twenty-second. Uh if somebody wants to make a motion to have our next meeting on Monday, May twenty-second.
I would like to propose a motion to hold the next meeting on Monday, May twenty-second at six P M.
Have a second? Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um before we adjourn, does anybody have any other business they'd like to bring up? No, entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great to see you all and take care and be well.
Yep, thank you.
You as well, thank you.
Thanks.
Bye bye.